Specific, but they do certainly spell out what the zoning bylaw would do to make sure that the coastal area is protected in this way. So council shall continue to support the use of land, use designations, green space and environmentally significant areas through the zoning bylaw and depicted on the generalized future land use map as environmental recreation. Land classified as green space also have two principal functions as a space for outdoor recreation activities or protected open space. Environmentally significant areas shall designate areas most sensitive to disturbance that contain distinctive features of biological, ecological, geological, or historical significance. Lands with these designations may be private lands and may not be open to public entry. With the exception of the town's historically built up shoreline extending from the western boundary of PID 01323492 to the eastern boundary of PID 15086705, council shall apply a limited development buffer area that has established adjacent to the ordinary high watermark for coastal conservation and aesthetic purposes. The limited development buffer area shall be used to regulate development along the Saint Croix River at Cadiz Cove in the Passamaquoddy Bay with limitations for tree removal, onsite septic disposal system placement, soil control, or other environmental matters as applicable. And there's one more proposal. It is proposed that council prohibit the placement of onsite septic disposal systems within the designated coastal conservation overlay. There are properties there that do not have municipal sewer systems and a septic system that close to the water would be very bad news, especially around Cadiz Cove. So the zoning implications for this, the general provisions in the 2020 zoning bylaw draft for the 20 meter setbacks will need to be altered to 30 meters and that that is the standard best practice. And the specific terms and conditions would be set in the zoning bylaw, but they would all relate to pollution, aesthetics, and the matters that are in the laid out in the policy. Some private residential properties currently zoned as green space on the map will be zoned residential in the general, but the general provision prevails notwithstanding the coastal area protection would prevail. And this is based on best practices. This approach can allow for low impact responsible development. This is not negatively impact environment or aesthetics. Small structures, non-habitable structures, things like that could be allowed. There are a few other amendments that I do want to touch on that don't have to do with the coastal conservation overlay. There has been a bit of back and forth with mixed use area that extends from the central commercial area and Water Street. It's as we've gone through different drafts, it shrunk and expanded and shrunk and expanded. And with this draft, we are leaving it as it was in the 2010 municipal plan. So basically it would not, that area would not change. There was a when we look at how the historic business district and the town plot and some of the areas directly adjacent to it function, there's still some questions over how that will be regulated, if it will be with the secondary municipal plan and a zoning bylaw, just a zoning bylaw, just a secondary municipal plan. So to leave all the options on the table, putting both of those in there, secondary municipal plan and zoning bylaw, as long as one of those is regulating that, then the policy is being followed. And so assuming that progress continues with the secondary municipal plan, it would allow the current zoning bylaw to regulate development until that secondary plan is passed. There is a general policy around education with design and heritage. Council shall work with and educate property owners to encourage best practices in design and heritage conservation. And there were some policies around short-term rentals in the housing section, and those have been very minimally, I would say softened. Council may permit residential properties to be used for short-term rental uses where such use does not significantly impact the long-term rental unit supply. Before significantly was negatively. So council would need to to study and understand the extents of the impacts of the short-term rental market on the long-term rental market and ensure that it did not significantly affect it. So it could still impact, but if it started being significant and assumably negative, then council would have have reason to act. So this is the new future land use map, and this is the coastal conservation overlay that goes around, it stops for the historically built up area, then picks back up again and continues along the entire coast. As you can see, the, it doesn't actually change the zoning underneath. You still have a state residential. You still have green space. I believe this is an environmentally significant area, small wetland here. And there is one area where that environmental recreation does continue. There's a legal easement that was granted to the town by the property owners along here. When the land was subdivided and council wished for that strip to remain on the map. So it is. And I'll turn it back over to the mayor and council and see how they want to proceed at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gopin. Counselor, any questions for Mr. Gopin before we move forward?
Yeah, we could worship. Just circling back. I know it's been a while since we've really dove back into this stuff mainly because of well, I guess you could say the COVID-19 and of course the election, but it didn't happen. Just wondering what thoughts to be behind. Basically going through the remaining readings of the of their primary municipal plan with their secondary plan and their zoning bylaw at the same time.
Council, anyone else want to weigh in on that? Maybe I'll go back to Mr. Gopin. Did you hear that question, Mr. Gopin? Do you have a response?
I do, your worship. Certainly there is a bit more time to play with now. And we had initially recommended that all three documents be passed at once. And that when when council was trying to complete certain things before the end of its mandate, there was a bit more pressure. And now that seems to have been relieved. So it's it's certainly possible. I don't think it's entirely necessary from a planning point of view. The municipal plan sets a broad direction. And it's very common for municipal plans to be set before the zoning bylaws brought in. St. Stephen is doing that now. Fredericton just passed a municipal plan and they'll bring a zoning bylaw in within the year legally. You must do it within a year, but that's that's what the Community Planning Act says on it and it doesn't go any further.
It's just a just a follow-up without a mayor worship. It's just when it comes to the primary municipal plan, people are looking at it and that's what we're voting on and they're and they're wondering really, what does it mean council is going to do? And I think it's a situation where I know the zoning bylaw can change three months from now, six months, but I think it's almost a thing of good faith to some people in the public to see us do it at the same time. So that way, if there's something in the primary plan, they can see what exactly we're doing in the zoning bylaw at the exact same time, just to show exactly how with the zoning bylaw, what does the primary plan? Because we go through the primary plan through and haven't really got too far in the zoning, the zoning bylaw, a lot can change between readings and what the intent is. So I almost, you know, we've been kind of batting around the primary plan for a long time. We've had a number of hearing objections. I hate to delay the process. I'm just wondering right now, it wouldn't make sense to do the readings at the same time. So everyone can see what the whole package looks like together. So anyway, just just thought about bringing the council's attention for now.
Council, anybody else have want to weigh in on that? I have a
I'm thinking this is a better conversation to have at our meeting at seven. Because it's a meeting at seven o'clock where we had talked about this. Right now, we're supposed to be hearing the public's hearing of objection.
Objections.
I would agree with that as well.
True. Just the planners asked if council had any questions, so I thought I'd ask questions.
Fair enough. Thank you, Counselor Harrison. I think we will do that. We'll pursue this at seven in our committee meeting a bit further. The, I just do, since we have Mr. Gopin here at the moment, I just want to follow up with one question. Is there currently harmonization? I thought I read somewhere or was advised previously that this process for the municipal plan, you know, would have to be completed within a certain period of time once started, or we have to go back to square one in terms of the approval process. Is that the case? Do we still have that year to do this left? Or are we in a time crunch here?
My understanding, I mean, there's certain time crunches that happen when you start a, when you, once you do a first reading, once you do a public hearing, I believe. And I'd have to confirm this later to be sure, but I think there's something like within six months of a public hearing, if the bylaw isn't passed, then you do have to go back to first reading. I believe there's something like that, but there isn't. These processes, we have been working on this for two years now. And the secondary plan is very close to being ready. The zoning bylaw has been drafted. It just hasn't been reviewed by council yet. So a lot of those things are in place. I I don't think legally you're causing too many issues if you decide to delay the municipal plan for the other documents. But you have seen the administrative challenges of passing one bylaw like this, and I think there's a reason why lots of other municipalities don't do them all at once. It's just it's a lot of work. It's a lot of reading for council. And so a lot of other municipalities choose to break it off into more digestible chunks.
Okay, good. Thank you. So we will move this forward to the committee meeting to for a bit of further discussion, but thank you, Mr. Gopin. And I think we'll now move forward because you're right. The purpose of this meeting is to hear objections. So thanks very much. So we will now move to the hearing of objections portion, and I will state the council of the town of St. Andrews is holding a public meeting to hear objections to the proposed municipal plan bylaw MP 20-01 in accordance with section 111 of the Community Planning Act. Mr. Knopper, we, council has had circulated to each member all of the written objections that were submitted up until just before the meeting, correct?
That is correct. Your worship, you have received all letters that were submitted to town.
And unless I have read wrongly, every one of those letters in one form or another relates to the coastal conservation overlay issue, correct?
Through your worship, that is correct. Most of the questions did, did come around the coastal overlay.
Okay. Your worship, if I could just add on, there was some concerns that were expressed in regards to short-term versus long-term rentals as well. And there was a piece of late communication, but I emailed the council right before this pertaining to that as well, but it but it was just received this evening.
Okay, thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor. The, okay, I guess we, Mr. Knopper, this is our kind of our first hearing of objections in this technology format. You know, what's next? How do we hear from the public?
All right. Thank you, your worship. We're going to do it in a bit of a phase. So we're going to choose, I'm going to go through each person on the list that's in the Zoom meeting currently, offer them an opportunity to provide comment or question to council. They'll be given their, the time limit of up to 10 minutes, but we ask you to be concise with your questions and comments. I will select a name to start. I will announce it. I will unmute that person. They will have the opportunity to speak. Once they are complete, we'll ask you to say, you know, that's the end of my question. We'll mute you at that point again. And council will move on to each or respond to the question or move on to another one. Once we are done with the Zoom, I will go to Facebook where we have a couple of questions already posted to social media and then we'll come back after that to finish up the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper.
Okay. So I'm going to start with Patrick Dunn. As was one of the letters that we were received. Patrick? Patrick, you're up. We can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk and your worship and members of council. So you have the letter of objection of today's date and my clients as listed there, and I understand that some of them have individually submitted some objection letters on a more personal basis to identify some issues particular to them and their specific properties that caused them to object to the current coastal conservation overlay. The purpose of the letter, which I submitted on their behalf, was a general explanation of their reasons for objecting to the coastal conservation overlay in this latest draft of the municipal plan. And it really, it boils down to three headings. The first being in part, a problem with the drafting of the what's variously described as the limited development buffer area in section 2.1.2 for the coastal conservation overlay in the generalized future land use map. And so that is unclear as set out in the letter, but based on the presentation that was just given and what we've assumed is that this overlay is 30 meters from the ordinary high watermark and that it is the same as the limited development buffer area that's referred to in section 2.1.2 of the plan. And the issue with it is that in essence, the property owners are concerned that additional restrictions on what they may do with that area of their properties are being imposed through this municipal plan, which which go beyond what is already required status quo. And I did hear Mr. Gopin's explanation as to how the coastal areas protection policy fits in. And I'm not quite so sure about the the comment that that has no legal force or basis in law. Although that is a policy, it does reference the wetland and water course alteration regulation, which which does have a force of law. And as I understand from my clients, to the extent that they have done things within that 30-meter zone, they have sought the necessary environmental approvals provincially. And so what they're saying is, first of all, it's unclear what additional limits are intended to be imposed in that 30-meter zone. And if it's nothing additional to what is already set out in for zone B under the coastal areas protection policy, then it's redundant. It's not required. So if it goes beyond that, obviously they want to know what it is that the council is intending to to limit. And if it does go beyond that, they're also saying it's a confiscation of certain existing rights. Now, obviously in the existing zoning bylaw, there's a, there is a prohibition on anything 20 meters from the ordinary high watermark, but in this case, you've got a 30-meter area and it's very unclear at this point what types of activity are intended to be prohibited here. And just for example, as indicated in the letter, there's a concern, you know, is council going to get involved in approving or prohibiting activities owners might wish to undertake to manage erosion, which is a permissible activity with the appropriate wetland and water course alteration approvals provincially. Is that something that there's an additional hurdle there that that they're going to have to go through with the town? So Adam, fundamentally, they say, don't impose this coastal conservation overlay. But if over their objections you do, please clarify it in the municipal plan, like set out the dimensions of it. Define it properly in section 2.1.2. And pleased with this one, as you've done with the environmental recreation above, clarify that anybody looking at this map isn't going to think that conservation area would imply that they can traipse across the private properties. So they would request if you're going to keep it, they say don't, but if you're going to keep it, be very explicit, express in the municipal plan and the map that there's nothing that implies a right of access or as a trail over private properties. And then just briefly, the remaining two points relate to, well, obviously the clarification required and they would like to see what you propose to do in the zoning bylaw. There's, there's a superseded draft from January that that doesn't talk about the coastal conservation overlay. So if you are going to impose it, then I'd suggest there's no time limit that that's going to prevent council from looking at them all at the same time. And that would be very useful to have to clarify and properly debate what's going to be limited in that area. And then finally, they do view it as an uneven application here. There's no reason in principle why you wouldn't apply it fairly across across the whole town. And even some of the exemptions don't really make a lot of sense to my clients and particularly, for instance, along Joe's Point Road. But really, what is the difference in terms of modifying existing structures or doing any kind of development or activity on their properties versus the other properties in the town that have been exempted along the coast? So those are the objections that my clients are putting forward. And so they therefore ask that you don't impose a coastal conservation overlay on their properties. But if you do, please make it clear, limit, make it express that it's not a right of access over private properties.
Thank you.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, your worship. I'm going to move to Paul Carter as the next to present. Paul, are you there?
Yes, I am.
You are open to council at this point.
So my name is Paul Carter and I am the owner of 106 Park Street at Elizabeth. The property is commonly known as the Mance. I'd like to talk specifically about the proposed heritage bylaws or provisions within MP 20-01, which I think are on pages 11 and 12, section 2.2.2 and 2.2.3. For the record, I am opposed. Considering that the role of governments at all levels is primarily prosperity and safety for its citizens, I'm having difficulty understanding how these provisions foster either of those worthy goals. Firstly, the proposed heritage additional bylaw provisions do nothing to enhance public safety as the existing bylaws already provide for that equally for all residents. However, on the issue of prosperity, the new proposal places ordinary property owners in St. Andrews and especially seniors on fixed incomes in financial peril. The mere declaration that there is a bylaw with additional requirements for heritage designated properties will hugely increase insurance costs for all heritage property owners. My insurance company has already told me that they would not renew my policy. And the reason is, they fully understand that heritage provisions will double, triple, or quadruple their repair costs of claims. They understand that this introduction of small measures now will morph later into what we see in New England down the road, where contractors need to get special certification to be qualified to do work on heritage designated properties. Ordinary people, seniors, will be subject to predatory pricing of these contractors. We already have a shortage of contractors. Imagine what it will be like after the heritage provisions kick in. You will drive ordinary people and folks on fixed incomes to choose between letting their homes deteriorate because they can't afford the inflated repair costs, or choose to do half-measures in a patchwork fashion, or sell because the heritage bylaw officer will have the power of God or think he does to force specialized repairs that we simply cannot afford. These heritage proposals are a form of class warfare as only the rich will be able to afford to live here once you let this genie out of the bottle. I know what the proponents of the heritage provisions will say, that it's just a minor change. But in truth, it's the thin edge of the wedge and a cancer on ordinary hardworking people who've spent their whole lives working and saving to have a nice house in a nice town. The heritage proposal is frivolous in the tiny appearance benefits that it might produce, but devastating financially to ordinary people. Let's say no to this class warfare. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Okay, thank you. Your worship, my counselor, Michelle's got a question.
Your worship, through you. I'm having a little trouble with my audio. I was only able to hear most of Mr. Carter's presentation. Sounded like it was a well-written script. If he could send that in and I'd like to review it. I wasn't able to hear it all. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Counselor Gumbashow. Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to Bartel Breeze Bow. I'm just going to unmute. Bartel, how are you?
Hi, just great. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I'm trying to see here how to very good. Anyway, can you hear me on the audio, gentlemen?
Counsel can hear you.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you. First, let me congratulate Mr. Knopper on making this work so smoothly. Thank you very much and congratulations. I don't know if I understood correctly. Are we able to ask questions here? I certainly have objections. Hopefully you've all read them or those on council have. But in this very moment, do you, are we asking questions as well as stating objections or not?
Through your worship, what we're asking is, please provide your comments. You can provide your questions. Council may respond to them. If not, they will take any questions or comments and take them to their next discussion when they go as council to talk about this.
Okay, great. Many thanks. So a question, gentlemen. The cost of this entire project, I can't remember when it started, of the municipal plan, the contractors and so on. It's been wonderful that Mr. Gopin in our community and he's doing fine work. So I'm not implying any criticism there, but I would be very interested as a taxpayer in town in what the cost is. Is anybody able to address that now, or is it something we should wait to hear back from you on?
We'll bring that forward to you with the final amount.
With a final amount?
Well, we, unless Chris Spear can answer that. Chris? You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, through your worship, if it's okay.
Yes.
So Mr. Breeze Bow, it actually hasn't cost us anything extra. That's a contract with the Regional Service Commission that they provide this at no extra cost. So originally, council was expecting to spend between $150,000 and $200,000 with outside consultants when we started this two or three years ago, talking about it. Then when we got into a contract with RSC on planning, this was actually added. There was no extra cost even when it was known ahead that it was going to be part of it.
Well done. Super. Great to hear that. Well done, everybody there. Mr. Gopin, nice to see you again. Your presentation. There was a slide where you addressed the use elements of the of the overlay. So I just call it the CC. So I just call it the CCO, if I have the initials right, of the Coastal Conservation Overlay. Are you able to bring that back up? If not, I can try to describe what I think I saw, and we can dig into it for a second.
If you just want to provide your comments, we've got to keep going.
Well, I've got 10 minutes, but thank you, Mr. Knopper. Okay, very good. So I'll just structure this as a question in that case. It says, I believe, I didn't have a chance to write it down, that the, these may be private properties. And something like, and access may be restricted, or they may be private properties, and they may, now to paraphrase, have some kind of access restriction. Mr. Gopin, are you able to provide us with that language again?
Alex, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here. You paraphrased it pretty much correctly.
Okay, if it's on your computer, can you read it, Alex?
Yeah. Give me one second.
Thanks, thanks. While you bring it up, let me just tell you what I'm concerned about, okay? While you bring it up, it says they may be private properties, and then what is it saying?
It may not be open to public entry.
So that means it is not permissible that they will be open to, or is it possible that they won't be open to public?
Depending on the property, because there are some of these properties that are public land, some of the
Right, okay.
Environmental recreational, like the Gulf, Gulf Coast isn't exactly public, but it's open to the public.
That's fair. Sorry to talk of you. Okay, so they may be private properties, those that are, are, and we know that. And may be what?
May not be open to public entry.
And may not be. What does that mean?
Those properties that are private, if those property owners do not wish the public coming onto their property, then they're not open to public entry.
Okay, great. So wouldn't it be at all hard, would it, to just to clarify the English there a little further than? Maybe public properties, in which, private properties, in which case the property owners will have the right to determine access. I mean, that, of course, is a 30-second little piece of drafting, unless I've opened up something that we really need to talk about.
In my mind, that would just be drafted.
How much time and heartache and money we'll save if we can just, you know, give voice in plain English to the assurances we're so happy to receive. Alex, what do you think of that?
Oh, in my mind, that is just a drafting change. That's not even a substantial.
Thank you, super.
Change at all, but it is ultimately up to council.
All right, okay. Does anyone on council have a problem with saving everybody a lot of heartache by just clarifying the English there? Good, no objections. That's great. Okay, well, I'm glad that'll be so easy to do. Similarly, I think, given the history, now if there weren't the history, we wouldn't have to do this. I'm sure other towns don't have to do it. Given the history, we do have to spend a little time clarifying these things. I think it will save the town a great deal of time and possibly a lot of money. Clarifying elsewhere, too, perhaps, that there's no right of access, no recreational use, I mean, or certainly community use implied anywhere in this coastal conservation overlay, which is why it's called what it's called, conservation, which I support entirely. But I really do think, after so much time, now's the time just to respect our friends and neighbors and just be clear about this. Or if we can't be, be clear about what the real agenda is, I don't think there is such an additional agenda, but let's just save ourselves the heartache by these simple clarifying things, please. Now I'd like to talk about my objections. I'm going to start, for the purpose of time, with really the second one. This selective application is inequitable. My family is not alone in being alarmed at the selective nature of the new zone. Any of these zones have to be uniformly and equitably applied. There's a reason that the province doesn't include a carve-out for special, people in special positions. It's very easy to make this as universal as the provincial zone by simply then including a simple language that would grandfather in, anything that needs to be grandfathered in. I think that we need to be consistent in what's included in this zone. And if we can't do that, I think we need to be consistent in the exemptions. I'll give you a very good example, seen in my letter. The historically built-up section of town, I mean, I'm not sure what that means. Much of the town is Georgian and was built in the 1780s. But, you know, my, that house that my grandmother built, that John Williamson now has on Pottery Creek, she built in the 50s. She drew it on the back of a napkin and a piece of paper, and she built it in the 1950s. My uncle Peter Breeze's house was also built in the 50s. And there's really no difference between them. There's tons and tons of room on properties like the Freemans and Mr. Clark's and so on, the McCain's and so on, on Joe's Point Road, between the blockhouse and Pottery Creek. Tons of room for these people to build an extra little summer house or cabin or something. There's tons of room. There, in town, there are empty lots. And there are, on Joe's Point Road and elsewhere, old houses, they get torn down and rebuilt. So there's great need for anything in the CCO to be applied everywhere else. But if it's not going to be, these carve-outs have to be consistent. In the case of my uncle, Peter Breeze, it'll go, the CCO includes his house. It includes his house. So if that's going to, if the existence, preexistence of buildings is going to be part of the rationale.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt. I apologize. But look, we have to move on. We have a number of people who wish to be heard.
Thank you. Sorry, was that 10 minutes? In which case, I thank you all for your time and your hard work.
We just hit 10 minutes.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to, through your worship, I'm going to move to the next one. Lyndy Townsend, you're up to counsel if you wish.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to echo the statements of our lawyer and Mr. Bull. And I wanted it to be known that we have tried our very best to be rational, to be equitable, to be neighborly. This has been a long process for all of us, and I'm going to read what I object to. But before I do that, I just want to take a couple of issues that I've taken notes whilst Mr. Gopin has been reading or read to us with his presentation, in that you have received feedback from us, but it's kind of a little bit whitewashed when it's termed as feedback. What you've received is three letters of objections. They've all gone on record. This has been a very long and stressful, costly process. And Mr. Dunn is sitting in this meeting unnecessarily because our objections haven't been heard, haven't been recorded, and it's gotten downright hostile in our town. You have what now is a lot of ratepayers who are going to object and align with the objections I'm about to read. But what the town needs to know, and my fellow citizens need to know, and my neighbors, sure, this, we have waterfront, but if you keep deciding to do this to us and we have to endure this kind of stress, it's going to be a very costly process. And Mr. Spear, I don't think that farming out or packaging out our development officer and the PAC to the service commission was a cheap endeavor. I actually know how much all of that costs, and it was far in excess. Now here I will read my objections. Thank you. Your worship and counselors, pursuant to the provision of section 25.1(c) of the Community Planning Act, please receive this letter and this verbal objection to the proposed St. Andrews Municipal Plan 2020 bylaw. While I agree it's important for council to regularly review and update its planning tools, there have been far too many foundational flaws with this planning process. Mr. Gopin, you've spoken about time. If we circle back to the terms of reference, to the CPA guideline reference, if you would all read that, you would see that the steering committee references that you committed to, the references within the guidelines that hearken back to the Community Planning Act, whilst you may say this is legal, what you committed to and what we have been waiting for is the subsidiary instrument, which is the zoning bylaws. You can't go like this, hold one thing up and hold something behind your hand and refer to what's behind your hand, but never show us what's behind your back. What's in this hand, we need upfront, side-by-side compare. What's, nothing hidden. So, in our feedback, as it has been termed, we object strongly, and that's why we've hired a lawyer. And it's not just us that's noted on that paper. There are other people who don't want reprisal from the town. They don't want the bullying. And our feedback stated that, but it's been a little bit whitewashed in these meetings. So I think we should publish all of our objections, because our fellow people who don't have waterfront are treating us very badly, saying we're entitled, we're jerks. And let me tell you, there's a lot of words that are worse than that. So what this whole problem, this whole foundational flaw in the process has been the sheer fact that you haven't listened to us unless we hire a lawyer, unless we yell at the meetings, unless there is a huge emotional push. We're sick of it. Now, let me explain to you where.
Listen, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Okay, well, I will.
You said you were going to outline your objection.
Here I go. St. Andrews Planning Bylaws Review Steering Committee Terms of Reference, authored by Alex Henderson of the Southwest Service Commission in late 2017. It's taken us this long. We can wait a little longer so you can provide those zoning bylaws with the municipal plan. To ensure that a municipal plan and zoning bylaw review is carried out in accordance with the set time that was established by Town Council, section 2, your first bullet, please note that the council committed to review both bylaws and present them for adoption concurrently. Appendix A of that document committed third reading of both bylaws, January 2020. Adoption of plan and zoning bylaws. It's your last bullet in your terms of reference. It is now apparent that adoption of the proposed municipal plan bylaw is way off target. So it doesn't really matter, and in the face of COVID-19, and in the face that the elections are going to be delayed, get this sorted like you committed to. The proposed municipal plan has a number of references within it to implementation measures that are to be found in the proposed zoning bylaw. Council's failure to adhere to its earlier commitment to roll these out, the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw concurrently, means that we, as community members, cannot see what the implementation measures are. Therefore, certainly about our properties and what those measures entail, we have to object to this current municipal plan. This is not, it's not only an abject failure, but it makes community members, why are our elected leaders not transparent to the ratepayers, especially us who are objecting? So, the New Brunswick Coastal Areas Protection Policy, I noted this on record at the last meeting. The coastal areas protection policy covers everybody in the town. This CCO exempts Andrew Harrison's father's property and Kurt Goomishel's waterfront property. It's not equitable. It doesn't seem right. So.
So that's your objection? It's not equitable?
Actually, there's two more points, and they're very much, they, you understand them because they've been written in the letters. You understand our push because we have our lawyer attending. But the CAP is a 30-meter coastal land buffer that already protects coastal environment features and regulates development within that buffer. So Zone B of the coastal area already protects the environmental features and regulates development. So the coastal conservation overlay designation is not only redundant because of the protections already provided by the CA, the coastal area protection policy, but it also creates unnecessary restriction on us private property owners. I think it's an overreach if we, to rely on the provisions of section 24.3 of the Community Planning Act as a rationale for including the coastal conservation overlay designations as part of the proposed municipal plan general future land use map. What section 24.3 contemplates are for base zones to be identified on the general land use map, not derivative zones such as the coastal conservation overlay designation. This is made quite clear on page 13 of the reference guide of the Community Planning Act. So in conclusion, this is the part that I think will actually hit home, and you guys will realize what you're doing to the revenues of the town, which the car already pulls into the garage on fumes. We don't have a huge budget in the town. These people, and all of us who've hired the lawyers so that they're, we're protecting ourselves against trails on our property, you have to understand, we've also, or at least I have, I'm getting an appraisal because what it feels like is hidden confiscation, expropriation without compensation. So the council needs to really think about rolling out these two plans as they committed and take into account that the CAPP already covers everything you need. Think about how inequitable this is and the appearance of Mr. Goomishel's father's property and Andrew Harrison's father's property being excluded. If it's for to protect against climate, then everybody should be included, including, as my friend Bartle pointed out.
Ms. Townsend?
Lastly, I know.
You're at your 10 minutes.
I've got one more thing to say.
Please make it quick.
The part that you need to hoist in, if you do this to our property, it's going to cost because we're going to fight it legally, but also it devalues our property, which devalues our tax, what we pay into the town. Taking waterfront, sterilizing it, making it waterfront to water view is hundreds of thousands of dollars. You would have to pay for compensation. And if water view taxes and revenues are what you're after, when you can't even afford right now to fix the trails and the climates, the damage from the storms.
Ms. Townsend? I'm sorry, I'm going to have to mute you now. Through your worship, we're going to move to Tom Sparling, if Tom would like to speak. Tom, you're up if you would like.
Sorry. All right. I didn't intend to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I am going to go next to... I am going to go next to, it'll be Dale Chambers. Dale, you have the council's floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, councilors and staff. I was just commenting on the 2.8.3 proposal, the short-term rentals. I sent in an email and I apologize, it was rather late this evening. And do I have to read the email, or can I just summarize what I'm thinking?
Please summarize.
Okay, so I think what the town wants to do is to ensure that there are more seasonal renter, seasonal tenants for seasonal jobs in the town. And I feel as a property manager of some 22 properties that I don't think getting rid or changing vacation rentals will alleviate that problem. As a property manager, if I couldn't do vacation rentals, I would turn my properties into long-term rentals, and I wouldn't necessarily rent to seasonal workers. I would probably, probably want a yearly lease as opposed to a monthly lease. So that's pretty well my summary, that I don't think limiting vacation rentals will alleviate the problem that you think it will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. I'm going to move to Susan Rose. Susan, you have the council's floor.
Thank you, I'm listening, but I don't choose to speak.
Okay, thank you, Susan. I'm going to, next to Stephen Crabbe. Stephen, you have the council's floor.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, your worship, councilors. I think you guys, I'd like to speak about my letter of objection. And I think that you've created quite a hornet's nest. And I think that, you know, my, our background was, we were the first people to build along the east side of the town on the former railway line. And so we've, we've seen it all, where the town and Kiwanis, sometimes hard to tell the difference, have pitted neighbors against neighbors, encouraged trespassing with their maps. And now what we see is new name to a new cause with an environmental overlay. And you're asking us to subjectively accept what you're going to do when the bylaws come down. So my issues are clear, I won't take a lot of time. I think what you've done in the planning documents and the way you're rolling them out is very clear. There's an agenda that has not been brought forth. And we ask that you postpone this in this time of COVID and all kinds of other issues economically, and get this thing right. Because I feel personally, it's discriminatory. It's not fair, it's very unequal. And I've been put through enough, my wife and I and family, enough punishment over this. This is the third time I've had to hire a lawyer since I've lived here, since 2003. So that's my position, and it's unlikely I'm going to change it. It needs to be modified, equalized, or removed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, I'm going to a phone number here, it's a 1416 number. 1416 number, you have the council floor. Please state your name before you ask your question or comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, hi, it's Jamie Piper calling from 34 Party Shores Drive.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Clerk, worship and members of council. I won't reiterate what's already been said, but I'll just, I sent three letters and more inquiries and objections at the beginning of this process, in February, March and April, repeatedly requesting the copy of the town's bylaws to determine the ultimate land uses and definitions. To me, this is the, is critical to the process, it's the kind of the crux of the matter. And I think, I do understand the municipal plan speaks in general terms. It doesn't necessarily spell out specific land uses and the definitions. That is covered in the town zoning bylaws, which I understand you're going to talk about that later on this evening in another meeting. And I hope you think that, I think that was poised to, Mr. Gopin, in his introductory, in his first remarks there, when he, I think he believed he said, the zoning bylaws are to be done within a year of the municipal plan. And I think it'd be very wise, a council could try and sync those two together, because one is kind of useless without the other one, in my opinion. And I question why the town is not updating its zoning plan either before or on the same concurrently with this draft, because it's so important to know what the ultimate uses will be. And I think that'd be very beneficial to everyone, because then we can know, and that's what I've been after from day one on this process, is to know what is included, what are the ultimate uses. Because you are, if you pass this, this first part here of the municipal plan, it's the first of an encumbrance that could lead to another encumbrance as you formulate the zoning plan. And without knowing what's in the zoning plan, I might not have any issues. But I don't know that now. And so that's sort of why I objected to the way it's, it's the timing issue of that. And because of that, that can come after the fact, it could lead, this is where I think it's leading to other speculation of other possible arterial motives that we've heard about. And to alleviate that, I think it would be wise to sync them together, and that way we know what we're talking about. And it could put a lot of concerns to rest, I hope. Anyway, thank you very much, that's my main concern.
Thank you, Mr. Piper.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, council. We're going to the next phone number I have here, which is a 1506 number. 755, you have the floor. Please state your name and your question to council. Hello? All right, going to Vicki Hogarth. Vicki, do you have any questions for council? Seeing none. Council, I'm going to Facebook for questions. So, question one comes from Sunrise Sunset. They say, "We definitely need formal protection of our coastal lands. With the province only having limited recommendations, the municipality needs to make formal regulations. 30 meters is reasonable, the coastal conservation overlay is important for all areas. Owners can apply for variances as needed that are reasonable." Another comment came from Cindy Kohler. "I am in favor of a heritage bylaw. Many of my clients express concern that we do not have one, since they are coming to St. Andrews for a heritage appeal." And finally, the final comment from Holly Johnson. "Ask can we raise the issue of allowing chickens in St. Andrews? Please, for the purposes of producing eggs and for local sustainable food source." Thank you. Those are all questions from Facebook. Mayor Dase, it's on you.
It's on me. Well, look, I appreciate the, we've had, we've had our hearing of objections, we've heard from a number of people, and I think it's now behooves council to take that away and consider everything that we've heard again tonight as necessary. At this point in time, I think the hearing of objections is concluded, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn the hearing.
I still-
Move.
The second, councillor Crean, councillor Akagi. Right, good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you to the members of the public for participating.
Your worship. Sign off, just as a PSA, I just want to remind all those interested that draft copies of the municipal plan and the secondary municipal plan are accessible still from our website. They haven't brought to council for deliberation yet, but what is to be brought to council is there right now. So for those that go to the standrews.ca, just on the right-hand side, it says St. Andrews 2020. Click on that, and all the documents are there. Thank you.
Is the draft zoning bylaw yet?
Has it there?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spear.
Mayor, are we going to have a five-minute break?
Yeah, we have to go to a new meeting.
I will start up the new meeting, you guys take five minutes.
Thank you very much.